Thanks. Five. In quick review, I did think that it would be interesting up for us to have a polar conversation about the specific five steps we get outlined, because I think that's really the crux of the thesis that the book puts forward as what sits within the purview of a board, what should be modeled by the board, and then, you know, what we need to be doing in order to ensure our focus is on the kids as opposed to the adults. He references this a couple of times to ensure that you have a student-focused, a student-centric focus as opposed to an adult-centric focus. So I'm actually going to assign people around the table to talk about each of the ones. So James, if you see this in my lap, I appreciate it. Why don't you take step one away from us, describe what the step is, and then we should have a conversation about whether this resonates and what we can do to ensure that we're modeling it.
Yeah, absolutely. So I underlined right above the steps, the engage in a never-ending continuous improvement process. So just above that, step one, because I've shared this before publicly, and I sat next to Jana that day listening to Ms. Wilson talk about like good foundational parenting and just everything. It's like, we hear criticisms and we think that means we're bad. We get praise. We think that means we're good. And the truth is that we are good. We can be better and we should aim to be the best. And step one here, all that is to say is that focus mindset, adopting a way of viewing the world that inspires effective governance behavior. And then if I skip down to, by definition, if a school board is not engaged in continuous improvement routines or spends its time blaming anyone for lower-than-promised student performance, then the school board is not doing the work to focus mindset. And so I like step one. It was identifying what you want to focus on and that you need to improve as you focus on it.
And there was, in the, in the reading, I think the statistic that he put out or the, the goal that he put out was that 50% of our board meetings, if 50% of the board meeting is not focused on student outcomes and priorities for what drives student outcomes, then we're actually not doing the work of the board. And so that resonated a lot with me, that that focus is really critical. I actually liked the, I'll, I'll read this little segment that says that school boards should leave from the stance that school, this is the important one, "School systems only exist to improve student outcome." And I think it's easy to get lost on that, right? Like, there's so much other stuff that we do up here. Like, really, the sole purpose of being here is to improve student outcomes. If we're not doing that, then what, what are we?
That brings me back to, you know, going through the pandemic and, you know, the community expecting us to be epidemiologists and pediatricians and, you know, and there was so much expected of us that had nothing to do with student outcomes at all. And we went through about two years where it just was more about the administration and what was going on there and what was going on with the pandemic. And so I appreciate that this, this governance board, as we've been set up now, has really started to shift in making sure that student outcomes are the most important, you know, aspect of every conversation that we have. It is really hard to do that sometimes in the community or something is going on in the community or the world where our attention is continually shifted from student outcomes.
Pretty great segue to the next step, Tasha.
Yeah, clarifying priorities. And so, you know, of course, the first thing that came to my mind when I read that is our strategic plan. But not just the strategic plan. I think that specifically this year, we were doing, or the, the goal is to do a much better job of always going back to the strategic plan. So it not being something that was worked on, written, and then we don't really see or hear about it until it's time to write another one. I think, you know, with this administration especially, always going back to all means all, all indicator, and what does that look like? And then everything that she's doing with her team and the executive team and the cabinet and the principals is all like connected back to that. And it's a, it's not just a practice or something that's just said, you know, in passing that we're actually seeing that that's where, that's leading back to that. So I think, for me, that's my, the biggest outcome for me in that whole, I mean, the paragraph is good, but I just kept going back to the strategic plan and just making sure that if we ever have a question about, should we go in a direction or what do we think about this, or should we be doing that, that we always go back to the strategic plan and say, okay, does it fit with the priorities that we've set forth in the next five years? And if it's going to shift, then we have to have a really good reason for it to shift.
I feel like in this second was the first time, I think, that he introduced goals and guardrails.
Yeah.
And so I'm anxious to learn more about that.
I had totally cheated and redheaded.
Okay.
You used the basis for the topic. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, because then it's referenced a couple more times after that. So, you know, I like her much.
What I liked about those goals, the starting from the SMART goals and then all the way through the guardrails, that really, it helps us focus, it provides clarity on what we are trying to do. But I think it also, I mean, it's the foundation of how we hold the superintendent accountable, right? That becomes the basis for what we're looking at as we, you know, review your performance. And that, so that is, I think, also really, really helpful in terms of taking the arbitrariness out of it and ensuring everything is aligned with that, that plan that we're supporting.
And even to take it a step further, that's also a way that we can communicate with the community about something as well. We always go back to the strategic plan as our answer to why they may not be getting something that they want in the, in the way that they want it. If we stick by the strategic plan, which was, which involved, which had, you know, a plethora of involvement from the community and that we all agreed upon. So I think that that, we can take kind of the personal part out of it or our personal feelings out of it and say, the reason why we're sticking with this plan and the way that it's going is because it's in our strategic plan. That's the only answer I can give you. You know, I'm sorry you're not happy with it, but that's, you know, we've all agreed that we're following the strategic plan.
So our representative from the West, want to take the monitoring part to scratch that itch there?
So step three talks about monitoring progress. And the thing I liked about this was a specific multi-year calendar, which I think Dr. Whitaker has already started to put in place where she kind of tells us board cadences and when we can expect periodic updates, which I think is also helpful for the community. But this author says specifically that helps the superintendent communicate to the community when goals are in place and how those goals are to be monitored and when they can expect updates, which also helps clarify expectations. So I think that's where, I think in the past, maybe we've had some room to grow is that we put goals out there, but we haven't taken the extra step where community members, teachers, other cabinet members have known when they're to be assessed and when that monitoring is to take place and when those goals are to be published. So having a very organized calendar so those goals are published and clear and what expectations are, that are in alignment with the strategic plan, but also in alignment with student outcomes, that has to also be the focus. We can't keep shifting the goals based on whatever new sort of priority we get. There's constantly going to be getting new priorities from the community, from parents, from, you know, other stakeholders. But if you have that multi-year calendar that's set at the beginning with what our priorities are at the beginning, we can just keep referencing that to go back to keep ourselves kind of grounded in it. And if color-coded, that would also be great.
And it will be color-coded.
The, I mean, it's a virtuous cycle, right? If you're, if you're tracking it, if, if you're able to see more quickly when things aren't working, to be able to adjust more quickly, be able to see what other things need to be adjusted, right? I mean, that's the purpose of it being a living document. And in, in the spirit of having the kind of data systems necessary to track and manage all of that, Jana, do you want to take us on the aligned resources?
Yeah, and so step four is making sure that the, our, how we use our resources is aligned with our priorities. And, you know, this section also made me think about our strategic plan because, you know, that will dictate, our priorities will dictate how we use our resources. And so I, I felt in reading this, this, this first section, it, it affirms kind of the path that we are on, having this new strategic plan and getting community input. I feel like we are trying to do each of these steps. And so that was affirming for me. And, you know, this, Ponce referenced this earlier when they said we need to redesign our, make sure that our meetings, where we spend at least 50%, of our time, mine, from progress towards the goals. And if the school board uses any criteria other than goals and guardrails to determine adoption of budgets, policies, superintendent evaluation, nearly everything else that it focuses on, then the school board is not doing the work to align resources. So if we're doing anything outside of those things, we're really wasting our time and resources. And so that was profound.
And it's not, it's not, I didn't read that as limiting. I read that as focused. I mean, there's a difference, right? And I think that was really an important, an important point. Yeah, lots of two. Dr. Whitaker, do you want to talk to us about communicating the results?
Yes, I think step five talks about communicating the results of all the work that we have been doing. And when you have a communication, it is to be two-way. So oftentimes, we are discussing and we are delivering information, but we aren't necessarily receiving that information or receiving feedback from the community on its implementation. And so this book actually begs us to do that, to have forums of two-way communication. And tonight is our first venture into that. Obviously, grading has provided us a catalyst to have that conversation. But grade on their behalf really says that if our vision and our values are to be communicated to the public, we should receive feedback from the community on the way in which we, they are receiving it. And as we are doing that, then we can see that we're moving forward for student achievement on behalf of students within those goals and within the guardrails of the strategic plan. So I'm excited about tonight. I think that it will be our first foray, but it will not be our last as it is the launch of a series of community meetings and opportunities for us as a governance team to inter, interact with the community in a different way.
I mean, I couldn't agree more. I, I'm super excited about tonight. I think it aligns with my previous experience in the public sector. And I know that board meetings have, have pretty strict structures and there are norms and protocols associated with that. But I, I, to be honest, have not ever been comfortable in my time on the board that didn't have a way to just talk to people in the community as a, as a body. And so I'm, I'm super excited about it tonight. I do want to just, you know, say it can get uncomfortable, right? But I, I think if we're always comfortable in front of the crowd, then maybe we're not asking hard enough questions. It's, it's okay to, it's okay to be uncomfortable. And so I kind of closing these, these parts out, I, I do want to just highlight in that last paragraph where it says, you know, this is a basic continuous improvement cycle, so James comments. But, and here I'm going to quote very specifically, but basic is not synonymous with effortless. And so this is going to be, it's going to be a lift. All right, and I think, we appreciate that we've got the support of, of cabinet and the leadership here. We're going to need to hear from the community. They're a part of this as well. And I just look forward to digging further into this book and implementing more of what we're, more of what we're seeing here. So how, how'd I do on an ad hoc presentation? Thank you, Board Chair Herndon.
No, thank you for leaving the conversation. And Tash White, look forward to chapter one next month. Dean, if you can do better, you'll all be graded.
You already know.
Well, Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you so much, Chair Herndon. Good evening. And today we will have one presentation, and that is our policy audit update by Amanda Lynch, who is our Chief of SaaS. The presentation will also be followed by discussion of policies also facilitated by Ms. Lynch.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Chair Sultan, the State Members of Board and Superintendent Dr. J. Whitaker. Last month, I presented with you the process we will use to identify our policy priorities for this year. At the end of August's meeting, I informed you that our next steps would be, would be to begin our policy audit process. Today, I'm happy to provide you with an update of the progress that we have made. As a reminder, our policy review process included three steps: audit, prioritize, and then to calendar and implement. Feedback cycles are included throughout each of these steps. As we began our policy review process, we recognized the need for a small update to our policy development model. Rather than each step occurring sequentially, there will be some fluid movement between each of the steps. During our audit, we identified several policies as priorities. Some of these policies are ones that you'll hear about in this pre-work session today. We recognize that our policy cycle of auditing, prioritizing, and calendaring will continue, especially if we gain feedback from our various stakeholders. We started with step one in our policy process, which was to audit. We identified 79 policies we have in place. All of these active policies were adopted by the board during the 2022-2023 school year. We also have three policies currently in draft. As part of the audit step, we also benchmarked our policies against other districts. These districts included DeKalb County, Fulton County, Henry County, Lee County, and Marietta City Schools. We also engaged in consultation with the Georgia School Board Association, or GSBA, and legal. We leveraged them to provide clarity around required policies and existing policies. After the initial auditing process, we began working to prioritize the policies for development. We used the results from the benchmarking against other districts, identifying policies that most of the comparison districts have in place that we did not. We also considered a priority criteria that was shared with us last month with the board. These criteria included fiscal impact, direct student impact, legal implications, and reputational risk. SaaS also informed the policy prioritization process by identifying policies that were needed to support your daily operations. Finally, feedback from the superintendent's gathering phase, including the stakeholders' listening sessions, was considered as well. Through the audit prioritization and feedback steps just described, we identified the first policies for action. First, our audit revealed a discrepancy around our existing policy for GAGC, employee ethics. The language that was adopted as GAGC is actually titled as Policy GAVA Staff Protection. So these two policies will be brought to the board after this, during the pre-work session today for discussion. Second, Policy BAC Equity existed in draft form from last year. BAC is also on today's pre-work session for discussion. Next, our audit revealed that we do not currently have Policy KM, Visitors to Schools, in place. Based on the need for school safety, feedback we have heard in the superintendent listening sessions and staff feedback, we are in the beginning stages of drafting this policy and plan to bring it to board pre-work in October. Finally, our audit revealed that we do not currently have a policy adopted around grading. We recognize that grading policy has a direct student impact. We've also heard from staff and community members confusion around our current grading practices. Therefore, we recognize it is vital to begin work on Policy IHA, grading system. We recognize that this policy will require meaningful opportunities for various stakeholders, students, staff, and parents to provide feedback. As you are aware, a community meeting will be held later tonight, 7 o'clock, at Decatur High School, with a focus on our current grading practices. So for the calendaring step of policy development, we are tentatively anticipating that Policy IHA, grading system, will be presented as pre-work in October and November. I will share more about the proposed timeline for Policy IHA specifically in a subsequent slide. So in addition to the policies highlighted on the previous slide, we've also begun to calendar policies that we will bring to the board for pre-work during the first semester. Here, as I mentioned, you see two versions of IHA, grading system, as pre-work in October and November, as mentioned on the previous slide. So for the month of October, you will see Policies DJD, which is expense reimbursement, or IHA, which I've already mentioned, KB, IKB, I'm sorry, controversial issues, and KN, visitors to school. DJD, expense reimbursement, was identified by staff as a district need, meeting the priority criteria we had established. IKB, controversial issues, is currently in draft form from the previous school year, so we'll be able to bring it to pre-work in October. KN, as I mentioned, visitors to schools, was identified as a needing policy and is expected that a draft will be ready for pre-work for the October fourth meeting. For the month of November, in addition to revisiting the draft of IHA grading system, several D policies have been identified. D policies address fiscal management. DC, annual operating budget. DIV, financial report. And DK, student activities fund management, are all policies present in at least four of the five districts we use for benchmarking. Therefore, we believe it is important to examine these policies closely and determine if these policies are needed here in our district. We will also continue to work with staff and consider feedback to identify if there are any other fiscal management strategies or policies that will be calendared for this semester. Now for the month of December, we have identified G policies for pre-work. G policies address personnel. Policy GBKA, professional personnel layoffs, was identified because again, four of the five benchmark districts had this policy in place, and we did not. We will continue to work with our staff, consider the priority criteria, and listen to feedback to identify the additional or any additional G policies that can be brought to the board in December for pre-work. Please do note that this calendar may be subject to change as a result of ongoing feedback and any gaps that might be identified through daily operations. Finally, I'd like to dive a little more deeply into how we have envisioned the timeline for developing Policy IHA, grading system. For the remainder of September and early October, we will get survey data from students, staff, and families on this is what we're going to do tonight as well. An initial draft of a policy will be presented during the pre-work session of the October Board of Education meeting. Then, following this, we'll continue to consider feedback, leveraging the superintendent's councils, the SDLT, PTA, Student-Teacher Councils that she holds. A revised draft version of Policy IHA will be presented during the Board of Education pre-work session in November. The date for the first read of Policy IHA is currently to be determined as it is contingent upon the previous steps just described. Please note the timeline for Policy IHA will be shared again during the grading guidance presentation scheduled for tonight's work session. This presentation will review current grading practices. Additionally, during this forthcoming presentation, specific considerations around policy development for IHA will also be shared. So that concludes tonight's update on the policy development process. You have any questions?
Did you, Jana? Just the clarity, and I know that we're getting ready to talk about this in a minute, but the staff protection, is that just a recatalization of the whistleblower policy that we had, or is this, that's something?
Yeah, so it was adopted as GAGC, but it's really a GAVA policy. It even said it so we can basically took it as-is and moved it over to GAVA where it belongs.
And then the annual operating budget policies are those, could we just get examples of those to review, if that's okay? I'm curious what they're calling for at a policy level.
Exactly, so I will be happy to pull those and provide those to you.
Great.
So move on to the, did, did you have more?
Nope.
Right, so I think I'm still, I'm, I'm up next as well to talk about policies specifically. So me again. Today, we have three policies that are going to be presented during this pre-work session for any discussion that you'd like to have. So I'd like to begin with, again, a little bit of that clarity that you just kind of spoke about around Policy GAGC, which is employee ethics, or should be employee ethics, and Policy GAVA, which is staff protection. The current policy the board has adopted as GAGC is actually titled in the body of it as GAVA, and it says whistleblower at the top. We removed that and left the language in the draft form, but it is otherwise as-is. It just, it is, it is what you adopted as GAGC, we can adopt it as-is just under the correct code, which would be GAVA, staff protection. So it's currently sitting out there in that draft form, but the language has not changed at all from what was accepted as GAGC. Essentially, it was just adopted under the wrong code.
But is it still going to say whistleblower, or we're not going to have whistleblower?
We could. At the very, very top, it said the word whistleblower policy, but it's technically not a whistleblower policy. Whistleblower is a part of it, but it is staff protection. If you read further through it, it talks about fraud, waste, abuse, and all that. So the draft version had whistleblower deleted.
The reason why I ask, and the reason why I think whistleblower needs to stay in it is because nobody is going to know to look for G A D C. I probably spelled letters wrong. Yeah, nobody's going to know to look for that. And I wouldn't necessarily know to look for something called staff protection, but I wouldn't know to look for something called a whistleblower policy. And so I do think if I'm searching for that, that term has to be able to be pulled up.
Perfect, so the, the name in the code is above us, like that's kind of what it's called. But it does say, under the purpose, it still says, "The whistleblower policy encourages", and simply does have a great search feature where literally if you type in whistleblower, any word, it will pull up all of the, the ones that hit that. So pergi-
I, I would still love to have it at the top. And I mean, I understand not at the very, very top, but where it is and what I'm seeing in this draft, where it says under, like right above the purpose, not in the tag.
Gotcha, not, okay.
Yeah. Does that make sense? Am I?
Fifteen of the full packet, the full packet.
And I do have some extra copies if you want me to pull them up.
So it's not going to be called employee ethics anymore, it's going to be called-
So that's going to be a different, so yes, this one that was called employee ethics is really staff protection.
So will, will we be able to say staff protection slash whistleblower?
So the names, the codes come from GSBA, so GAVA is called staff protection. But if I'm understanding correctly, the hash on the table is at the top, it calls above purpose to put whistleblower policy and then go into the remaining language.
Yeah, so it, oh, go ahead.
So basically, it would stay like where it is right now with whistleblower.
And we'll just take out employee ethics and add what it supports, staff protection.
I, that's, yeah.
Is that our standard?
I think I captured that. I will make sure that I send it, you guys, the revised version, the redlined version.
Do much of our work and research with you.
I do.
I mean, I think we have, we have to keep staff protection. Because that's universal.
Right.
So if we just keep whistleblower policy there.
Underneath.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
How is it working in other districts?
I would have to look. I did speak with both GSBA and their legal team, as well as our legal team around this. And, and they didn't specifically say like whistleblower on there necessarily, so.
Most, most districts utilize beyond simply the term of whistleblower because you're including in fraud, waste, and abuse. And so that's why it has the overarching term of, of staff protection. Because it's basically for anything that's encompassing in that.
I, I feel like I remember from these conversations when this was being drafted that there were only a couple of other districts that actually had a whistleblower specific component of it. it, which we explicitly wanted.
Okay.
And so I'm totally fine, obviously, with it being a staff protection, because I get that it is more than just whistleblower, but I, just so that that is an easily searchable, clearly identifiable term in the document for whoever might need it, it's not like it's buried.
I think it should, if it's staff protection, that's what it should be called, because it does sound like it encompasses other things, and if that's what GSBA told us, I think it's, it sounds like it encompasses, like you said, fraud, waste, and abuse. Otherwise, if I was looking for the fraud portion, I might also be misled, you know? I might be looking for that portion and then not realizing that it was actually encompassed in that particular policy. So. I think if it's staff protection, and that's the way that it is characterized across other districts, and that's what GSBA has, I would leave it like that.
And you would prefer to take this out? This is going to be staff protection, this is going to be staff.
Right, because I think that's a subcategory of the broader umbrella. Because it's whistleblower, fraud, it's waste, it's abuse, it's all of those things.
Yeah, I don't know that, so my perspective there is that what motivated us to put this policy in place was specifically so that teachers knew that they had whistleblower protections in this district, which is different from a number of other districts. And I think that if that, if we bury the lead on that, you know, I get that people can search, but if they don't see titled policies where there's that word whistleblower policy, then it gets missed. I get that there's other things, I mean, I would be fine saying whistleblower policy and fraud, blah, 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 but I think it is important to have whistleblower at the top.
But it is, it's right there at the top. I mean, like right under staff protection, the first subheading.
Oh, I thought you were suggesting that we take that out. No, 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 I'm fine with it. If it stays there above purpose, I'm fine with it. I thought you were suggesting we take that out. No, I miss that.
All right, so my understanding is that I'm going, we're going to make sure the word whistleblower policy appears above the purpose, that will look, other than the GAEA, like it was that this board adopted not too long ago anyway, just to recap, we'll be able to then look at them under GAEA, under the right code. All right, so.
Fantastic.
I believe then, Dr. Whitaker, this can goes into first read for the October board meeting. Great, perfect. And then the next step is under GAGC, so that's the one where we had this mislabeled. So did work and look at some surrounding districts as well. So under GAGC, that would leave us without a policy. So what the policy kind of proposed there, GAGC again is employee ethics, again consulted with GSBA and legal. The draft proposal that you have is simple, it just literally is a sentence that says that all school system employees will comply with laws, statutes, board policies, administrative procedures, and the standards of the Code of Ethics as provided by the Georgia Professional Statelez Commission. So thoughts about, or thoughts about that or discussion about that as GAGC draft. Not much room. All right, excellent, then we will move that to first read for October as well. Right? And then finally, we have Policy DAC, which is equity, presenting for discussion tonight. As you are aware, this policy has been in draft form since last school year. A previous version has been open for public comment. Tonight, the redlined version of the policy is open for discussion, so of course, we can have any discussion, and then we can decide if we would be ready to open it for public comment and add it to the October calendar for first read.
Apologies, can I get a redlined copy of it? I don't, I just have the non-redlined.
With this version with the edits and what I can see, usable by, for the public in any.
The public, yeah. You're on the public side.
Okay.
So this is the one we went back and forth on? Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And the context for some of these changes, if we're going to be talking publicly about it, the context of some of these changes, keep me honest here, Dr. Whitaker and everyone, is that we need to be able to comport to state law without painting a target on ourselves. But we also have to be able to reflect the values and wishes of the community, which are very clear on this particular topic. And the one thing that is not at all controversial, even in the case of the state law, is that all children in the classroom need to be treated fairly equitably and be provided the same resources and capable education. And so that actually is where the rubber meets the road on this policy is in the classroom. We'll be looking at differential outcomes, we will be executing against differential outcomes, and we will be closing those gaps that we have so consistently seen in our day.
Yes, that's exactly what that means, Board Member, is when you think about what we just read with grid on their behalf, understanding that we will be able to not only look at our budget and our resources that we align, but also ultimately the, that it is not, for its race, ethnicity, or any other indicator, would be the reason why, or would be that reason why the student does or does not succeed. And so if we believe that all children in our district should be seen safe and successful, we are providing equity to do so.
You know, I feel confident about the changes, because I know that our council has been engaged in this, and I feel good about us having equity policy, but with, you know, recent laws within the state, you know, that we are complying with that. And so I'm good having an equity policy, even with these changes, and the community, it still communicates our commitment to equity to the community.
I think that's an important point. I think that a lot of people watch the policy go up, and then come down, and then go up again, and they watch how these redline changes, it's not, it's not a reflection on our commitment to the core values. It is to make sure that we're in compliance with. I think we feel as good about it as we. Some of it has to do with the language of it, so that we can, so that we can be in compliance with the state, but it's not because we had put it on the back burner, that we weren't committed, or that we had decided that it wasn't important, because I think that there were some concerns, and it had gone up and come down, and we had prioritized some other things, but that was not the core issue. It was more or less that we had to make sure that we were able to put something out there that we could change.
And very specifically, how do we be as aggressive as we possibly can through our policy on this particular point, but without bringing the state into the, into the, right? Because, I mean, if anything, if it was a commitment, it's a demonstration of our commitment to this, that it took us as long as it did to actually get it right, so that we can be comfortable.
Right, so it sounds like we will add this as a first read in October.
Yeah, yeah, sounds great.
You know, I would like to commend Dr. Huddleston and Dr. Baines for all the work that they put into it in the beginning, because I'm, you know, it's what, three, two pages, but I know a lot of time and effort went into this, and then, then we have these changes that are beyond our control, and so, but I appreciate their commitment to getting this policy in.
So the thing that we of all, as five members of the board, have universally an agreement out, is we want to communicate to the staff and the community that teaching, and I, it's one of these in the A through J, it's like, we will do all we can for an equitable system that eliminates disparities where they are identified, and that has been and will continue to be our priority. And that's what we've all, when we open it up, community, that's, I mean, that's what we're trying to do, and teachers know, because we get that all the time, like, it's a tough time to be a teacher, trying to teach the reality of the world, which should just be what teaching is, so. Sure I stole it from one of y'all.
Let's take the policy back down, add that language in.
Well, I will say that we will have another presentation today for work sessions that will. Probably speak to some of the things that we know we must do now in the state of Georgia based upon law, and we are going to be compliant, but at the same time, ensure that we do have equity with the schools of Decatur, all truly in golf. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm getting there. That's it? Yeah, we're done with the pre-work session, we can take a, you know, a nine-minute break, and we'll begin the work session presentation device, does that make sense?
It does.
Okay, all right, we are adjourned from the pre-work session. All right, we'll call the order, the five o'clock work session. Thank you for joining us today for this monthly work session. I know this is the second time we've kind of combined the work session and the board meeting, and our new board meeting's cadence is an example of how we create a more effective and efficient organization through the implementation of our strategic plan, all indicators. During our first board retreat on August 17th, we discussed the board and superintendent norms and working agreements. Dr. Whitaker, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair Herndon. The superintendent norms and working agreements speak to how we, as a team, will operate. The Board of Education and the superintendent, we really form a governance leadership team for the local school system, and act in a manner that focuses on student achievement. So in the document, and you all. He highlights a few things. One, the governance team roles and responsibilities. It details how I will communicate with board members and provide information to you all. Also, it specifies constituent concerns and how they are handled. It illuminates how the board interacts with me, as well as how they interact. And then finally, when we think about how they, how you all have a role in the community, as many of you are also current CSD parents. It communicates how the leadership team plans and how we conduct our formal meetings. And finally, it speaks to the superintendent evaluation process. So Chair Herndon, do board members have any comments regarding the communication norms and the working agreement?
Any comments, concerns that Dr. Whitaker has shared?
Yeah, as far as the constituent requests and issues, I did, I did, there was, I guess maybe just a quick discussion on the boundaries of that, right? So I think we wrote this for when people have kind of structured or formal requests, it might come to one of us or all of us, there's this clear process in place. But, you know, like if my wife asks me a question about, like I'm not going to refer her to eat, I'm just going to answer the question, practically speaking, and so.
No, I think you should send that to all of us.
She's been calling me regularly. Full-related questions.
She texts me all the time, wanting to know.
That's because I don't know the answer. Like there is, you know, friends or community conversations that you have, where it's just a very simple piece, like, you know, that I just, is there, how are we as a body thinking about where those lines are? I think you can obviously, like, it's clear when an email comes in and there's a request for some specific thing, like, that's very straightforward.
Yes. It can be something as little as, I want to know why we don't have hot dogs on certain days, where it could, to some, they may wonder, is that really a true constituent concern? Well, if it is something that a family is concerned about, giving us, giving me the opportunity to address it, so that I can really begin to see if certain things have a trend or a pattern of concern. So certain things, if you can just answer off the top of your head, you know, feel free to do so, but if you are finding that this is something that is reoccurring, and I need to address it, I need to make sure staff is aware, then give us the opportunity to do so.
And I mean, that makes complete sense. I think it's more the low-lying thing, you know, when does the budget get adopted? Well, we know the date that that happens, but I don't know that that needs to get run back through you or the whole process. And so there are, I think that makes sense, because it's a very simple, just sort of straightforward fact, that isn't really impacting policy or anything like that, that's straightforward to answer. If there is something that is a potential. Yes, or if there is something that might actually refer to a policy that needs to be built out, obviously, that is something that has to go to the whole group.
Yes.
Okay, just a question, what should the, what should parents and community members expect as far as communication from us or you to them? Because we often get emails that are day-to-day matters that come to us, or problems that have escalated from the community, they've lost their proper channels, and they feel like those problems come to the board, and really, they're day-to-day matters, so they're outside of our purview. So when we get those emails, it says clearly here that if it comes to one of us, then we forward it along to everybody in the, on the board, including the superintendent. What should the community expect in terms of who their response will come from? Does it always come from you? Because you're, you don't, you have, you have, you have a lot on your plate on a daily basis, does it come from you, does it come from people's communication? As well as what should community members expect in terms of turnaround time? Because often what we see is emails get kind of lost, and it's probably because you're doing other things, and they feel like they're being unheard. So what should those expectations be?
So great question, Vice Chair Solson. One, when a community member, anyone emails me, I will reply back to them, letting them know that I'm probably looking into the matter. Now, they may not receive a formal response from me, but it may be a member of cabinet. So say, for example, there is a question around something to do with math assessment. And so math assessment is something that we do here in our school district, but the window hasn't closed yet, so I really can't answer the question yet, or staff can't answer the question. But what they should know is within 48 hours, they will be able to hear, here's the answer, or I still need to explore. And that answer may or may not come from me, and that is the critical piece to know, that we do have staff that handles various matters, and that if it is something that could be something from a teaching and learning standpoint, it may come from Ms. Burkin, if it's something that a student services standpoint, it could come from Dr. Huddleston, or various members.
Martha, I remember what you were asking, you know, where's the line? And this is constituent request and issues, because I think that that's much different from what time, you know, being started, so, you know, a request, I think, definitely has, any kind of request. Right, definitely has to go through, go to the superintendent, and any concerns, because there are really no concerns that we can really address.
Concerns clearly, I just, there's sometimes a request for information, like legitimately, what date are you voting on the budget is a request for information. I just, I think that there are, there's a, there is a baseline threshold that I think we should be aware of, like level of importance, or digging for the answer, or something that might have an impact on operations or future policy, all of that obviously needs to be brought up.
Because it feels like to me, if we have to ask someone else, but. Because it feels like to me, if we have to ask someone else for the information, if that's something that needs to be forwarded to the superintendent.
Hundred percent.
If we don't, if we don't have that answer.
I think the reality of it is, a lot of the times when we get involved in emails is because parents feel like they've had to escalate to the level of the board. And a lot of the time, it is day-to-day operations or it is student constituent services. And I, I think most of the time, the superintendent has to help in those conversations, mostly most of the time. So I think that's an important point for parents and community members to understand is that, A, when you're emailing the board, you're emailing all five of us. And if it's a day-to-day matter, most of the time, we're going to have, we're going to have to forward it on to the, to the superintendent.
And I mean, I've had, I, I, and I had to be clear with community members, I've had texts come across that, I'm like, this has to be, like, this needs to be an email and you need, you need the copy of the superintendent, like, this is not something I can directly answer. But even if I did happen to know the answer, that would be something that has to go through this, this is important.
And thank you for the, doing the email.
Yes. In regards to constituent services, I know, again, this is previous life, but I, I know that the role of constituent services was not, not necessarily to answer the questions or the things that came in, but to certainly quarterback so that at least it was going to the right people and it was being rounded up back to the, back to the, the parent. Has that all been fully put in place or is that, we're in the process of that?
Well, we are in the process of that. There are a couple of things I would love to see from a technology standpoint to help us quarterback some of that information. There are systems that help with that, and so we are exploring all of those. So I expect to have a full plan for you, as I explain in the end of my ninety days, to say when that will be up and ready. But I do believe that a constituent services is part of the role of the office of the superintendent and that quarterbacking is critical so that we know that concerns that are coming from our constituents are being closed and closed in a timely manner.
Yes. And that, I mean, that'll take a lot of these email pressures off of us, right? I mean, at some point, the community will get, yeah, to the point where they trust that if they send it to constituent services, they're going to get a prompt, comprehensive answer back and they don't have to ask them. So that, looking forward to that conversation.
So am I. It will help with email. All right, so at the end of this document, the hard copy board, we do have a case for us to sign and we will have one specific copy and we will be able to sign that, you know, at the end of our meeting. But yes, so that concludes that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for the comments. Next month, we will take our annual self-assessment during this time, so.
The board is.
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm. We can, we can die. Dr. Whitaker, any presentations for the work session?
Yes, Chair Herndon. First, I would like to call on the Associate Superintendent of Equity and Student Services for an update on Senate Bill Ten Eighty-Four and the toolkit. So Dr. Lily Huddleston.
Good afternoon, Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Solson, the team board members and superintendent, Dr. Huddleston. This afternoon, I'll provide you with an overview of the best practices toolkit for House Bill Ten Eighty-Four. In April twenty-twenty-two, House Bill Ten Eighty-Four, the Protect Students First Act was passed into law. The law requires school boards to, and superintendents to prohibit discrimination based on race and mandates that school curricula and training programs avoid promoting or encouraging divisive concepts as specified by the law. The law also applies to educator preparation programs and creates oversight of high school athletics that could limit the participation of transgender students in athletic programs. In addition, the law requires a complaint resolution policy to address alleged violations of the provision, including a process for submitting and reviewing complaints and the right to appeal decisions. This toolkit was originally prepared by the Versa Impact Group with input from Metro Atlanta Equity Chief, and it was adapted by the Equity Department to ensure alignment with our strategic accelerators, building and sustaining and engaging in inclusive culture, cultivating and retaining quality professionals, and ultimately, student success in all areas. The toolkit explains divisive concepts, highlights family members and caretakers' rights, and offers support for teachers to continue to engage with all students in ways that allow them to be safe, seen, and successful. The law does not prohibit the teaching of concepts such as tolerance, mutual respect, cultural sensitivity, or cultural competency, provided educators do not espouse or advocate for divisive concepts. However, the law may limit the critical examination of ongoing systemic challenges facing our country. This slide outlines some of those potential challenges that may impact students, teachers, and administrators without careful planning and consideration. These include less exposure to content related to race, gender, and access, restrictive parameters, and increased accountability for classroom content, and more administrative duties related to responding to complaints related to S B Ten. The toolkit outlines strategies and practices for teachers to continue to provide a rigorous culturally responsive education while following the law. First, it's important to make sure that all educators familiarize themselves with the book. Toolkit clearly highlights what the law does and does not require to ensure that teachers can plan lessons effectively. Another strategy is to focus on best practices. C S D, that includes the focus on the Georgia standards of excellence as well as the focus on C S D's culturally responsive due-for mindset. We also recommend that teachers are aware of their own biases and beliefs to ensure that they are facilitating class discussions in an objective manner. Teachers can be more competent that instructional materials do not violate the list of specific divisive concepts by proactively developing lesson plans and syllabi that are reviewed by grade and content-level chairs and administrators prior to delivery of lessons. It is important to continue to expose students to diverse content, but teachers should be thoughtful and strategic in their approach to teaching instructional materials. The toolkit includes scenarios that teachers might experience in the classroom, along with potential ways to address them while following the tenant's outlined objectives. It's also important to build positive relationships within the classroom as well as within the community to ensure lessons that are inclusive and reflective of the families and students we serve. We recommend that teachers focus on student-centered techniques such as the use of Socratic questioning and avoiding the use of I statements when covering sensitive topics. Slide outlines our training time. Started by presenting the toolkit to you today, later this week, we will train district leaders, followed by workshops with the student principals and instructional coaches. Teachers will have access to the toolkit and a training video from the Equity Department. All teaching staff will review this information by October second, and they'll have ongoing support from their school leaders and from the Equity Department. Proactive communication plays a vital role in addressing concerns in a timely and effective manner. It's important that all school stakeholders understand the law and their responsibilities related to adhering to it and responding to complaints. C S D has developed a detailed response process displayed in this infographic. All administrators will be trained on this process as well as their roles and responsibilities related to addressing complaints. We also have developed communication templates to promote clear and transparent communication regarding concerns and complaints. We both, we also have planned to debrief any complaints to continuously improve our processes and prevention strategies. Are there any questions?
Um, yeah, a couple, a couple of things came to mind as, as we're thinking through it. There are, it, I could be wrong about this, but it would seem self-evident to me that certain classes or class topics are going to be more fraught than others. Have we, have, have we really kind of prioritized which teachers and which topics those are and focused our efforts, you know, sort of both at the beginning and then throughout on helping the teachers that are kind of in the crosshairs? I, you know, it, it doesn't feel to me, and I could be wrong, but it doesn't feel to me like a elementary math class is probably at that risk as a, like a critical thinking class at a high school level, right? And so are we kind of distributing the, the resources in a way to kind of reflect that difference?
The first step is to make sure that all teachers have that foundational information about the law and understand the parameters, because in any course, topics can be brought by students, you know, current events and things of that nature regardless of the time tent area of official class. I think that as we move into the higher grades, we work very closely with teaching and learning, and they have mechanisms to be able to review these plans and things of that nature to be able to support teachers as they're moving forward with their lessons.
Okay. And then the, the last thing that I was thinking is, is, you know, a lot of the, like, how we, but at least what I'm hearing, some of the angst with teachers is, you know, a, a real fear of, of being caught out on this and, and being caught out, and I know putting a training in place and all of that is very helpful. What, what else do we do or even can we do, or would you like us to do, to help communicate the teachers that we really do have their back on us? And that, and that it's extremely important to us that they continue to do the excellent work that they do and we are not only the mountain dry if something comes along?
I think the conversation that you were having earlier about the equity policy is very helpful because that allows teachers to understand that you are committed, that commitment remains even though we have certain constraints. So I think continuing to share that message is so important because there is, there's a law. We want to make sure that teachers have an opportunity to practice through some of the scenarios that will come up. It's impossible for us to know everything that will possibly come up, but knowing that the school board supports them in doing this work, I think that will go along.
Thank you.
This may be a, a hard question to answer, but what are some of the things that we're preparing for that could, that could happen? What, do, what types of things have we put in place, you know, if a complaint comes, for example?
So one of the, what was your aspect about the toolkit is that there's some templates for communication, because a lot of times when these things happen, we want to be ready to promptly make sure that people understand the policy for complaints and who actually is addressing them. So if it comes up that a parent reaches out to the teacher about a concern, the teacher will know who in the building is responsible for responding to the situation. And then we can sort of remove that, that pressure from the teachers because there'll be people who are going to handle that first level of response and then carry out that process.
I don't know, go ahead.
Was this toolkit developed by us or would this come from guidance from the state or to something that we adopted? And ultimately, who is going to be leading these kind of workshops and guidance, namely for like the instructional coaches and the department leads and that sort of thing? Kind of looking at like the pathway for the complaints, was that something that we created or did this come from the state?
So it's a, a combination from the Versa Group, the Versa Impact Group created this. And this is work that's been happening since last year when the law first came into, you know, sort of our consciousness. A lot of the metro area chiefs got together and they were working with this company to, to prepare, because we already knew that teachers would need some information about how to navigate and incorporate this new information. So that, we, we got a basis from that group. But then, Dr. Banks and our equity team, our small and mighty team, really took some time to take that information and then make sure it was reflective of the work we've done here in C S D. Because we have already, you know, worked on cultural responsive education, we put a lot of things in place and we wanted to make sure that the toolkit still encourages our staff members to continue to do work that allows them to really have that critical inquiry around, you know, history and things of that nature that we don't, that's the combination. Then as far as the training, once again, I'll be our team, working with these different groups. So we'll be training all of the internal staff. And then the video aspect is just to make sure that people have something on demand because we're going to need to hear this information multiple times because this is new. So there will be internal training.
I didn't have any questions, I was just trying to think about how, you know, to articulate how I'm feeling without saying anything that would be against the law, but it's just heartbreaking to me to know that teachers are fearful of teaching the truth. And I just hate that my comrades, you know, I co-taught eighth grade, eighth grade, uh, social studies or humanities, and when you get to, you know, Georgia history and, you know, it's just such a, I mean, this, this will fall right into, you know, any, like to any subject, it can happen, if fifth grade math, whatever, math question that's inappropriate about, you know. You see that, we see those stories on the news all the time and, but that, you know, those history, those classes, you know, I think could potentially make a teacher feel more vulnerable. And, and even as a board, you know, we, I think we communicate to the community that this is important to us, but, but we are limited by the law, I think, you know, to how much we can allow. And so, so it's, it's challenging, but, you know, I think the toolkit is helpful, the templates are helpful. Hopefully, you know, there'll be some changes in the future.
I think that's an important, an important point there that this, this hour ago, the same conversation about the, um, policy, it's not reflective of, of how we feel about the, it is very challenging. Make sure that we're in compliance with the law and maintaining our own, maintaining mission and values. I do, I, I think we're all sort of heartbroken for the teachers if they feel like they can't, like, that we have to go through a process of.
I mean, what, what we said, I think that the law directly conflicts what we view as our values around teaching the truth and, and educating children appropriately for the modern world. And while we're going to have to comport to the law, what we will do is ensure that we provide the resources necessary so the teachers are fully aware and we will do everything we possibly can do to make sure that our teachers know we have their back to the absolute extent of the law. And we'll provide everything that they can possibly need in order for themselves to be comfortable and also compliant.
I really, I mean, it says it right there, continue to facilitate effective classroom conversations. Teachers should do that, period, end of the day. I mean, there's some other stuff in there, like, make sure your students are feeling comfortable, have effective conversations, and I hope every teacher gets a copy of this, like, how to respond complaint plan, because it's great. It's good, it's like, don't respond to an email immediately, even though you may want to. Identify the people in your building, if you are a teacher who's feeling stressed about this stuff.
Who says this and this is.
Yeah. Who in the building do I contact first and foremost to help me handle this? As a teacher, those three things, be effective, teach your subject, make sure students are comfortable, that's three there, and then, you should be fine.
That's it.
You're fine, you're good.
It's gonna be fun.
Okay. Thanks, though.
Thank you very much.
I know, Dr. Whitaker, we have another presentation, community's probably anticipating?
Yes, yes, Chair Herndon, the community is eagerly anticipating our next presentation, and I would like to call on Mrs. on Mrs. Karen Newton-Scott, our Chief Performance Officer, and Mrs. Amanda Lynch, who is our Chief of Staff, for an update on standard-based grading and assessment.
Good afternoon, good evening. Where are we? Okay. Good evening, Board Chair Hearnin, Vice Chair Dr. Sulten, esteemed members of the board, and superintendent Dr. Whitaker. Grading continues to be an opportunity for improvement and solutions of data. Today, I'm here to provide a brief historical overview of grading in CSD, detailing some changes and challenges on our present state and future needs. Furthermore, I will outline the specific interim revisions and changes for this current academic semester, as well as policy development needs to fully achieve our goals of clarity and guidance for teachers, transparency in practices for families, and equity in grading for our students. In 20, no, in 2009, a decision was made to transition our K-5 schools from traditional zero to 100 grading to standard-based grading. In an effort to align practices with the standardizing in the nation was the passing of No Child Left Behind. For elementary schools, the grading scale changed to one to four, and standard-based report cards were developed. In 2012, changes also occurred in grading in a similar way for both middle and high schools. Both transitioned to criterion-based grading aligned with the assessment criteria prescribed in the IB middle years and diploma programs. Teachers at the middle and high schools were directed to evaluate and report students' performance based on IB criteria rather than providing explicit reporting on students' mastery of state standards. This shift in grading methodology was outlined in the 2013 system charter contract renewal and approved for the entire 10-year duration of the contract, which concluded at the end of last school year. In the 2021-22 school year, a grading task force was convened to critically review these grading practices with a focus on equity. The team was charged with conducting comprehensive research into equitable grading practices and presenting recommendations for improvement. A portion of these recommendations were put into action for the 2022-23 school year, while others are designated for implementation in following school years. Like to spotlight, four of the task force's recommendations that were partially implemented, and they specifically align to the changes that we are setting forth for the current school year. First, CSD should have a consistent grading system and platform across grade bands that is transparent and easy for students and parents to access and understand. CSD should no longer use manage-backs for general grade reporting and recording. All grading should be related to mastery of content standards, and we should have clear policies, boundaries, and parameters around makeups, retakes, including a last possible date to submit late work, how long a student has to complete a retake, and how many times a student can retake an assessment. A significant challenge encountered with manage-back was the absence of state course standards and a valuable calculation method that could be consistently applied across both middle and high schools. Unfortunately, these challenges were not fully resolved during the transition to the use of Infinite Campus for the 22-23 school year. Specifically, Decatur High School did not have course standards entered into Infinite Campus, and neither school had a suitable method for calculating grades. You can probably recall the conversation about mode at the middle school last year. Therefore, in the spring, our school teams met to explore available calculation methods within Infinite Campus. Our primary goal was to establish a uniform approach to grade reporting across grade six and 12. After extensive discussions, we arrived at consensus. It was decided that both middle and high schools would use averaging to determine course grades. Furthermore, we achieved the successful upload of state-approved course standards for 9 to 12 grades into Infinite Campus. This reinforced our move towards clear alignment with state requirements, particularly in terms of patient promotion and the awarding of course credits on the concepts and skills outlined in the state-adopted curriculum. In continuing the transition to Infinite Campus as our one platform for grading, although the task force did not explicitly mention the GPA scale in the recommendation, it is a chance of peeling back layers of an onion. As we delve deeper, another awareness emerged. In the first two columns on this chart, you will find the one to seven scale and the corresponding numerical equivalents that have traditionally been utilized at Decatur High School. The notable distinction between the previous lies in the modification of the 4.0 scale, specifically in relation to mastering all, mastery of all general education coursework. Previously, students were awarded up to a 4.25 for general coursework. CSD cannot score higher than a 4.0 for general-level coursework, because the extra points should reflect that students have successfully completed advanced-level coursework. However, for more advanced coursework such as IB, AP, and dual enrollment courses, the scale will extend to a maximum of 5.0. This reinforces the practice of reserving GPAs above a 4.0 exclusively for coursework, syllabi, and curricula assessed to meet advanced-level criteria. It is crucial to note that these changes do not retroactively alter any previously established GPA. Any GPA earned by students at Decatur High School during the spring of last year will serve as their starting point for this school year. I'd like to reiterate that the guidelines for retakes have remained consistent. This approach has been used by Decatur High School in previous years and will be maintained throughout the current school year. While there were suggestions to amend these guidelines from the initial draft presented to Decatur High, it is important to note that these drafts were intended for discussion and consideration. Unfortunately, once the drafts were in circulation, they were interpreted as official policy. What we have here on the screen in the four bullet points are guidance for teachers around Additionally, for consistency, elementary through high school are now reporting out on a semester cycle. This means every child enrolled in K-12 will receive two progress reports this school year and two report cards. Progress reports will be available midsemester as shown in blue, and report cards at the end of each semester as shown in red. We also have standardized the format of all report cards K-12, so that parents don't have to acclimate to different formatting. In response to questions raised both within the community and during Decatur High School's curriculum night, we have developed a frequently asked questions document. Grading information also existed in different places and with inconsistency in the guidance by teachers and families. We have taken what has existed, updated any changes, and consolidated all grading guidance and practices into a CSD grading and reporting handbook for grades K through 12. This handbook serves as a single point of reference for both enduring and evolving Draft of the handbook was made available to school leadership teams prior to the start of this school year, allowing for opportunities for feedback. These teams shared the draft with their staff members, and any changes since then are reflected in what I'm sharing this evening. At this point, unless there are further recommendations or necessary adjustments from the board, our next step for this school year is to furnish schools with standardized communication materials for staff and their families that can be tailored to convey the changes and demonstrate how they are implemented in practice. There is still much work to be done around grading. The transition from manage-back to Infinite Campus for 612, and the end of the 2013-2023 charter brought to light more change that is necessary for the system that bases promotion and the awarding of course credits on the inclusion of concepts and skills of our state-adopted curriculum, which is a mandatory requirement for public schools in Georgia. I also want to underscore that these changes were already in progress prior to Dr. Whitaker taking the reins as superintendent. We did not, we did not do prior to the start of this school year was to communicate what was uncovered that could not continue to go unaddressed. One, we could not continue to not require that all teachers report on students' mastery of standards. And two, we could not continue to award bonus points for coursework that has not been designed and assessed as advanced-level curriculum. Therefore, it appears that Dr. Whitaker is making these changes, when in fact, any change for this school year is directly connected to the work that began with the recommendations of the grading task force back in 21 to 21-22 school year. This is a great way to welcome you to CSD, Dr. Whitaker. We are so glad you're here. These changes represent progress towards goals of clarity, transparency, and equitable grading practices. Nevertheless, to fully realize our commitment to these principles, we need a comprehensive grading policy. Amanda Lynch, our Chief of Staff, will now provide further insight into the next steps as we continue to move in this vital direction.
Thank you, Ms. Newton, and hello again, Board Chair Hearnin, Vice Chair Sulten, esteemed members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. J. Whitaker. Ms. Newton details the history and current state of our grading practices here in city schools of Decatur. As she indicated, we are currently implementing grading practices in the absence of a grading policy. The Board of Education is a governing body that establishes policies to be implemented in the operation of the public school. Policies serve as the umbrella under which regulations or operating guidelines are created. These regulations should be aligned to any adopted policy. Therefore, we recognize the need to get a grading policy in place. Policy is needed to inform future regulations and practices. In developing policy IHA, we recognize the need to pay particular considerations to change management, systems, and... These are areas where we have admittedly fallen short with our current grading practices. As a new policy is adopted, we must manage any change. That grading policy and its subsequent practices will have a direct impact on students and staff. Policy development will require planning, establishing benchmarks, transparency, and frequent communication. We must also plan for appropriate training for staff and communication with students and families. We must celebrate our wins along the way while making any needed adjustments that will lead to our continual improvement. As shared in the pre-work session, we've envisioned an initial timeline for developing policy IHA grading system. For the remainder of September and early October, we will gather survey data from students, staff, and families on our current practices. In fact, as you know, following tonight's board meeting, the first community meeting will take place at Decatur High School at 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The focus of this community meeting will be grading. This is an opportunity for increased transparency and two-way communication between the board and the community. An initial draft of a grading policy will be presented during the pre-work session of the October Board of Education meeting. Then, following this initial draft, we will continue to consider feedback, especially leveraging the superintendent councils, GPA, student, teacher councils, and the like. A revised version of policy IHA will be presented during the Board of Education pre-work session in November. The date for the first read of policy IHA is currently to be determined, as it is contingent upon the previous steps described. As this timeline indicates, we are committed to transparency, feedback, and communication as the board moves to adopt an official policy for IHA grading system. That concludes our presentation, so of course we'll entertain questions for this time.
There was, at least in a, in a presentation like this that I've seen earlier, a slide that showed how Decatur really was kind of an outlier. There wasn't any other district like us that offered that 0.25 bonus on standard courses. And in fact, every district around us, if they did offer a boost, was for some sort of advanced course, either the college credit-based courses or honors courses. And so I know there's probably some interest around that, whether we're going to approach having honors or having the opportunity to have courses like that. But do you mind taking half a second and talking about, you know, that particular slide? I mean, I know it's not in front of us, but that particular information that we had where we saw that we were very, very different from everyone else around?
I can't say credit for the legwork, but principal schools researched what area school districts were doing around GPA, and from APS, Buford, Cherokee, DeKalb, Fulton, Glenette, Henry, and Marietta, they all assigned up to a 4.0 for general coursework, except for Fulton. They don't calculate GPA, they calculate the percentage grade, so the kid makes a 98, that's what they report, yeah? And they let colleges do the calculation, and then all of the bonus points were for honors, accelerated IB, AP, that kind of thing. Decatur was the outlier with the 4.25, and for general coursework, and the 5.25 for advanced-level coursework.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's a pretty salient, I mean, that drove us to some of these decisions, I think, so that's, thank you for that.
I think some of the conversation has also been if we get rid of the, or if we adjust the GPA down to between a six and a seven, there's, you still earn that 4.0 GPA, so if you get a 92 on a test, it's still reported as a six or a hundred, if it's reported as a seven. Could you explain to parents what that means in terms of force motivation, why students should still strive for a seven, or what that means in terms of how they're graded on the IB scale? I think there's a lot of confusion between how IB and, what it means to have an IB scale, standard-based grading, and then what's how that translates into GPA, kind of what's that slide was, where you have the columns there. I think there's often some confusion there, and why it's so important to still strive for that, for that seven.
So as you'll see here, one of the, I want to mention that one of the things that teachers do in planning to assess is develop rubrics. And those rubrics give clear criteria for what a 1 to 7 requires. And so there's still, so it may not be huge differences. There are differences in what a student would perform at a six opposed to a seven. Not enough of a difference for us not to consider a 4.0 at the same level. You'll also see that the numerical equivalent for a seven is a 100, and the numerical equivalent for a six is a 94. So students can still be motivated to have that perfect 100 opposed to the 94. All of these numbers are really evaluated based upon the college and university that receives them. And so we, so we can interpret them... And so we can interpret them one way. Ultimately, it's up to whomever receives it to say exactly how they are awarding points or whatever they receive from the primary school.
And what I would like to add to that for Vice Chair Sultan is that as we develop a policy around grading, we would be able to really garner that feedback to determine, do we want to still maintain the three different columns that we see right now as we're moving forward? So I look forward to that type of communication from, and feedback from the community, also from our students, and also from our teachers.
Pardon me if I'm wrong about this, but there's also a desire, I think, on our part to not introduce unnecessary harm. If it is in fact the case that we cannot go above a four-point-oh, then what is in front of us to maintain a difference between a six and IB six and an IB seven is to reduce the current value of an IB six, which is going to harm the kids that have been getting the IB six to date. And I don't think we felt drawing the distinction between those two grade bands on a temporary basis, knowing that we're getting ready to go into this policy to try to craft something more comprehensive for the community, would be appropriate before we had sought any parental feedback. And so that also, I think, if I'm correct on that, influenced some of our thinking on not drawing that distinction on this temporary basis.
You are correct, that's a very good point.
I was just going to say, I really appreciate the historical information you provided to us in terms of kind of how we got here, particularly in terms of, you know, sharing that these changes started before Dr. Whitaker got here. Now, because I know that sometimes there's a perception that new persons coming in and just, you know, making, you know, all of these drastic changes, but these changes were already in the works. And ultimately, we are trying to be right by our students. So we recognize that there were some areas there and now we're trying to correct.
Another question, I think it's a couple slides up. Because we, I think, over the past week or so, we've been focusing on GPAs. But another detail in there is retakes. And I think there's a lot of confusion amongst the teachers, department chairs, about retakes. And I hate that the teachers are confused. I think that confusion gets passed on to the parents. So I think if we could maybe just highlight, especially for the students in the room, one, I think, one critical point there that I pulled out of that is that if a student wants to retake a test, they're supposed to be informed about what standards they did not perform on and what mastery they're supposed to achieve on the assessment. So the other question there is, is it up to each individual teacher or department to decide what grade they have to have not met in order to qualify for a retake? So could you have gotten a six and say you want to retake for a seven? Or do you have to have gotten a two in order to qualify for a retake? Or is that up to each individual department?
That was a point of discussion. And so generally, when the student has not performed at whatever is defined as proficient, then the opportunity to retake is there. There was discussion around capping that. If you did retake an assignment, to cap it at five, because five, by definition, on the scale is proficient. And so let's say a student who earned a score of a six and did not retake, and then a student earned a score of a four and did a retake, then would that be fair for that student who retook the assignment a second time to earn a seven? When the other student who scored at proficient wasn't even provided the opportunity to retake because a five is proficient? So we had lots of discussions around that and where did we want to land with that? We decided to stay the course with what the current practice is because we know other changes are coming down the pipe. And it really, it doesn't harm the kids, all students, to retake parts that they do not show mastery. That's a good practice for any student because even if you have a high score, there could be an area that you didn't quite get that you can have an opportunity to learn and show mastery of. So in my opinion, I'm the sole person to set the guidance of policy. There's no harm in allowing every student another opportunity to provide the evidence that they can do the work.
I tend to agree with that, just speaking for myself. I do think that if we are truly student-focused and we're truly student-centered, allowing any student the opportunity to, again, demonstrate mastery, if they do then demonstrate that mastery, they should be awarded for it.
Pardon? Grades, I'm a senior, been fighting because I want to get into, you know, anywhere but UGA. And how does these changes impact my life, my application? I've worked in two admissions offices, but from CSD's perspective, from your perspective, how are there?
Students continue to take advanced level coursework.
Okay.
Then they continue to have the opportunity to increase their GPA. If a student has only explicitly taken general level coursework and they finally have a four-point-two-five, they will not have the opportunity to earn more than a four-point-oh. So naturally, their GPA will gradually decline, but they have the opportunity to maintain that four-point-oh. But that's just the nature of, if you don't have the opportunity to earn those bonus points, again, then, you know, the end result is that there will be a decline.
But do universities even accept the four-point-two-five? I mean, at Emory, we threw them out. They just don't even care. Fours and fives, those are magic numbers.
Generally, the universities, I don't use the word stripped because that's kind of like what we've been saying. But I'm sure the process is more divisive. Right? But they recalibrate the grades on a four-point-oh scale anyway. Or if the student has taken advanced level coursework, then they assess their coursework and give bonus points for that as well. So in essence, if a student only took general level coursework their entire high school career and they ended with a four-point-two-five and they went to apply for a college or university, it is likely that they're going to recalibrate that to a four-point-oh scale and the point-two-five bump will not be taken into consideration.
If a student is coming into our schools from one of the other systems that allow for the honors classes up to like a four-point-five, for example, those grades, those trans grade grades should still continue to exist. I mean, we may not have the honors courses here for them to take, but we would then offer the AP or IB or dual enrollment options. But those grades that get transferred in should still come in at a four-point-five?
Right, we would not take anything when we come to students.
And lastly, what is the, what is our plan for making sure that the counselors are clear on kind of all the things that you just mentioned? How GPAs are recalculated by universities? How each individual college will, you know, kind of recalibrate your grades and that sort of thing so that when a student goes in to meet with their counselor and they say, I want to go to this school, this school, this school, they're clear about what their application looks like, about how their GPA is calculated? And they're given all the correct information, or even when they're juniors, so that they know how to pick their schedules? Because I hate that there is confusion and I hate that maybe the teachers are confused and that emotion gets passed out to the parent. So what is our plan for making sure that, like I said, our department chairs and our counselors have all of this information? It may have to be passed out more than once, but that we have to plan for that.
We're fortunate to have counselors at Decatur High School who could probably come and talk about this stuff more eloquently than I can. The challenge is, is with working with the Decatur High School leadership team to ensure that teachers understand what is changing and what is not changing for this year. These changes should not impact their teacher practice in the classroom. They should still be assessing, developing rubrics, their scoring on the same scale. These changes really impact after they have assessed and they explore assessments and the students have their grades, then how does that translate? And I am confident that the Decatur High School counselors are first and then what this looks like. And many colleges will have calculators on their website. So if you're considering going to a college, you can go in to input your grades and kind of get a gauge of how they will assess your coursework and assign a GPA to what you earned at the high school.
And I would just like to add that we have published a frequently asked question. So that FAQ document would be able to not only guide and support families through the questions, but also to guide and support staff that may have questions in addition to the guidance document itself.
Thank you, Ms. Newton Scott, Ms. Lynch, for the presentation. Each and every board member has received feedback, concerns about the current grading system, particularly at the high school level, and the implementation of some of the recommendations presented by the previous year's grading task force. Reiterate that the board strongly supports and is committed to ensuring that CSD has a consistent grading system across all grade bands and a platform that is transparent and easy for students and parents to access and understand. In the coming months, the board is focused on creating a grading policy. We don't have one. The process will include opportunities from feedback from September, from students, staff, and families that begins as early as September. Last item, in February twenty-three, the board authorized former superintendent to act on our behalf, apply for two zoning permits. By applying for the zoning permit, CSD would have the ability to offer affordable rental options for our employees. Now that Dr. Whitaker is our superintendent, we just wanted to renew our commitment to this action and look forward to her working with the city of Decatur to bring that vision into reality.
Thank you so much, Chair Herndon. I will work with the city of Decatur to do so. Thank you.
Okay, that is the end of the work session. And I will call to order in the six o'clock board meeting. We now call this meeting to order at six P M. We ask that you silence any cell phones at this time. We will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. At this time, I ask that everyone join me in a moment of silent reflection. Now I ask that all that are able to stand, please do so for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Our mission, I'd like to start with this, is to inspire and enable student growth through meaningful and engaging learning experiences, supported by highly qualified and caring educators in a safe and inviting environment. We'll move to the second item on the agenda, which is the approval of board meeting agenda for September twenty-two-three. Board members, are there any revisions to the agenda this evening? Do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
Do we have the September agenda?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion items for tonight's agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Next agenda.
The item is the approval of minutes from the previous board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve August's regular board minutes?
Motion to approve August's regular board minutes.
Excellent, do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We're now going to move forward with the other agenda items, starting with the student and staff recognition. Dr. Whitaker, it's filled up. I see some students and staff in attendance. Are there any recognitions for anyone?
I think so. It was so exciting to see all of our students and our families too. So this evening, we are proud to have five Decatur High School students who are our twenty-twenty-two-twenty-three recipients of Governor's, of Georgia's Governor's Honor. So the Georgia's Governor's Honors Program is a state-funded and it's a month-long residential program for gifted and talented students who are rising eleventh and twelfth graders on the school level in an area in which they excel. So this could range from core fine arts to performing arts to world languages, technology, and engineering. Around seven hundred students are selected each year to attend this summer program from all across the state of Georgia in their nominating areas. So also, in August of twenty-twenty-three, the College Board awarded thousands of students from across the country the academic honors for their national recognition program, available to students on Big Future. And as a parent of an eleventh grader, I am also very familiar with Big Future. So the program celebrates underrepresented students who excel academically on college board assessments, including the PSAT, PSAT-ten, AP exams. So sophomores and juniors had to score at the top ten percent on the PSAT in MSQT or the PSA-ten within that program by the state ineligible to on their exam period. So sophomores and juniors are also qualifying by scoring a three or higher on two or more of their AP exams in the eligible exam period. Students can include in this academic honor on all of their college applications, which I definitely expect to see. And many colleges intentionally recruit students who receive this award through the College Board's Student Search Service. There is so much that makes our students unique and receiving this honor reinforces this as an asset to their future. We are so thrilled to celebrate and to recognize them for their great work and their strong academic performance in the classroom and also on their college board assessment. So at this time, our Decatur High School principal, Mr. Duane Spruill, will come to the podium to make a presentation to the awardees. And also, I believe Ms. Erin Newton Scott will accompany.
Good evening. Dr. Whitaker, I would like to invite our cheerful school performance, Erin Scott, to join me to present the awards. The recipients of the two thousand twenty-two-twenty-three Governor's Honors Awards are Ida Chapman, Margaret Cowell, Genevieve Guardines, Grace Goodman-Cone, and Cecilia Frayby. Some of these students are not here because they have other commitments today, but those that are here, please come forward.
I failed four Governor's Honors application every year. My wife went twice.
The big list, so if you're here, come on up when I call your name, please. The recipients of the College Board's National African American Recognition Program awards are Amir Muhammad and Dulay Hitman. Bye, too sorry. Andrea Ferguson-Brown. Gabriel Westry. Gabriel Westry. Yes, we did. Yani Estavido. Angie Watson. Iska Ashun. Thea Poole. Princess Alagory. Bayla Canis. Laura Hanson. Lucas Abibi. Olivia McKinley. Kell Tartt. Samuel Wodogakis. Kyler Bennett. Sorry, Kyler Bentley. Sydney Pierce. Travis Whitson.
Congratulations, Abby Watt.
Okay.
Good, beautiful.
Yes.
Yeah.
Careful.
Yeah, stop, please.
They're maybe not here.
Got to double up.
Yeah. There.
Are we there?
Okay, everybody look this way. One, two, three. Thank you.
Your host, Phil Tate, from that corner. Camilla Hardy.
And right here. There you go, everybody in this plane, I'm over here. One, two, three.
One more. I got one more behind. One more. Our awardees for the National Hispanic Recognition Award, Isabella Watkins-Gomez. Isabella Cabrice. Laura Hanson. Lucas Paul-Wentzke.
Thank you so much, families, for joining today.
Where's everybody going? We're a fun group.
Thank you, families, and thank you, students. It is awesome to see so many of our students excelling.
Absolutely. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Whitaker, you have items to share with us this evening.
Yes, Board Chair Herndon, thank you so much. We are just over six weeks into the new school year. So our CSD students and staff and families continue to show that we are all in. This month, CSD is celebrating Hispanic Latinx Heritage Month, which is celebrated in the United States from September 15th all the way through October 15th. This month recognizes and celebrates the history, the culture, and achievements of Hispanic, Latinx, Latino, Latinx, X-American. The observance begins on September 15th, which is the Independence Day for five Latin American countries. So that's Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Mexico's and Chile's Independence Days are also observed during this period, and on September 16th and September 18th, respectively. In CSD, this month is not just about celebrating diverse cultures and identities across Latin America, but also ensuring that it is inclusive and that there is a belonging of those diverse cultures and identities. In addition to the DHS students that received all of those wonderful awards from the College Board, we are also excited to learn that the U.S. News and World Report ranked Decatur High School at a top high school and also the 16th best in Georgia. Congratulations to all of our staff and our students for that achievement. Over the last month, I have continued to achieve the components of my three-part entry plan. I posted listening sessions across the district, gathering feedback from students, staff, families, as well as key community leaders to determine what is going well in CSD, what opportunities exist for improvement, and how we can work together and partner to ensure that every student is safe, themed, and successful. But also, I focused on how I, as their superintendent, can support them. All of this feedback I have received to date has been invaluable. I've heard a lot about the high quality of our teachers and the sense of community that is cultivated in our schools. I've also heard a lot of concerns about the delivery of students, a delivery of instruction to students with special needs, teacher compensation, district and school communication, grading, and particularly at the secondary level. And I need to ensure equity in education of all students. While it didn't come up as often as other topics, I did hear concerns about the physical safety of students. Safety and learning are my top priorities. And I will continue to be proactive in interweaving equity into every aspect of our school district and to ensure that we are creating that safe learning environment. So speaking of listening and safety, let me pause here to remind us that September is also National Suicide Prevention Month. Throughout September, mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and community members unite to promote suicide prevention awareness. At CSD, we are listening and working to create the environment where everyone has an equal opportunity to have and enjoy a positive mental health and also well-being. Again, I want everyone to know that I am and we are listening. I will host one more listening session this Thursday with families residing in our Decatur Housing Authority before moving fully into the next phase of my GEM entry plan, which is envisioning, envisioning the way forward so that we can maximize our results for all students. While my listening sessions may be ending, my engagement with our stakeholders is really just beginning. Because this month, I will launch and continue a variety of student or superintendent councils. I'm excited to encourage our student voice at all levels at the Student Advisory Council. So I will have one for the elementary students as well as one for the secondary students for a Student Advisory Council. The opening application for students interested in serving in either of those councils has been communicated via our school newsletters, our district communication channels, obviously also via social media. But the deadline for those applications was extended until today. So I'm hoping that anyone who wants to be a part of this inclusive representation of CSD, please, students, go ahead and apply. I will also launch a Support Staff Advisory Council, and I will continue with the Teacher Advisory Council, bringing onboard a TTO Advisory Council, and then finally continuing our work with our SLTs at the central level of council. These councils will meet once a month, providing opportunities for dialogue, sharing of our ideas, addressing concerns, getting that two-way feedback that we've been talking about here, and also really to provide a deeper understanding of our collective challenges and our aspirations as we all are going to have purpose to improve our student outcomes. I know that the value of stakeholder engagement is to improve student outcomes as well as the merits of ongoing professional learning for our teachers. As we mentioned in our last board meeting, the board approved nine early release days for this year for teacher development. The first early release day for pre-K through 12th grade was on August 30th. Collier Heights ECLC remains really on their regular, normal schedule. I want to remind all of our families and our students that our next early release day will be September 27th. Early release times will remain the same for pre-K students through our high school students. Parents are encouraged to check the district and the school websites for early release times for their students and their schools. Again, College Heights ECLC will remain on its normal schedule. But in addition to early release days, this year, the board voted to make November 7th a remote day. So I will now call on Jennifer Burton, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, to provide an overview of the November 7th Remote Learning Day.
Good evening, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Fulton, Superintendent Dr. Gina Whitaker, and esteemed board members. Remote Learning Day is November 7th. The purpose of the Remote Learning Day is twofold. The November 7th Remote Learning Day is Election Day, and we believe it's important for our staff to have an opportunity to participate in the democratic process. Every staff member will have two hours to vote. The Remote Learning Day will also be used to grow digital learning skills for teachers, students, and support staff. So what does student learning look like on the Remote Learning Day? Pre-K through 12th students will be at home. Our berth to three students at ECLC will remain on site. Our K-5 students will have the choice of online or offline learning opportunities. So for example, our K-5 students may engage in a digital writing assignment on the importance of voting that's posted in their Google Classroom. Or they could complete the same writing assignment using paper consoles. Our 6th through 12th students will have online learning opportunities only. Our secondary students are already becoming accustomed to completing assignments posted in Google Classroom. All instructional service providers will participate in the creation of the assignments to meet the needs of all of our students. 6th through 12th students additionally will have the opportunity to check in with their teacher online. The teacher will post a check-in time where students may log in to ask questions or get additional support from their teacher. So what will our teachers be doing? In addition to having an opportunity to vote and attending and attending online student check-in times, all staff will have time to complete various required training depending on their role. Our six through twelve students already have devices, but if students need a replacement device, they should go to the Media Center to request that replacement device. We want them to do that now, ahead of Remote Learning Day. Our K-five students will not require a device to participate in learning activities on November seventh, but we will make them available to any families that would like one. In October, a technology survey will be sent out to our K-twelve families to determine device and hotspot needs. These surveys will be translated into multiple languages and managed at the school level to allow for follow-up communication. Our media specialists and site tech will coordinate the equipment distribution. To help prepare our teachers and students for the Remote Learning Day, teachers will have one digital assignment posted on each early release day. In K-five, teachers will post one digital activity in their Google Classroom. Students can interact with the activity online, or they will get a paper version sent home that week that they can complete on paper and turn in to their teacher by the end of the week. The purpose of these activities are to ensure that our youngest students know how to find Google Classroom and to navigate to a class assignment. In six through twelve, teachers will post an assignment in the Google Classroom, and students will complete it online the week of an early release day. Our goal is that by engaging with digital learning even in small ways, that we'll continue to build age-appropriate familiarity, equitable access to learning, and capability with online learning tools. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before, in my remarks, I want to assure our families that I realize grading, particularly at the secondary level, has been a great concern for families. While these concerns predate my administration, I'm committed to working with the board to ensure a consistent grading system and platform across all grade bands will be present, and also that it's aligned and state-approved according to our state core standards and requirements, and that it's easy for our students and our parents to access and to understand. As such, I want to reiterate some of the aspects of what our Chief Performance Officer Karen Newton-Scott delivered earlier in her presentation. Establishing, establishing grading policies and a transparent rubric will be a priority of my administration. C S D's current grading protocols are not in compliance with relevant standards, and it must be addressed immediately, correcting it and bringing our system into compliance. Students who are enrolled in I B or A P or Dual Enrollment Courses can earn up to a five-point-oh for their GPA for this coursework. No longer will students that are taking classes outside of the I B program, A P, or Dual Enrollment will be assigned a GPA above a four-point-oh for that coursework. All other students and classes will be graded on that four-point-oh scale to ensure that the City of Decatur remains in compliance with the accreditation standards. Students can retake assessments, and the highest score is recorded and the lower score is dropped. There is no cap on what students can earn on those retakes. Current GPAs will not be recalculated. However, this may have some impact moving forward, and we will make every effort to minimize the impact where possible. And again, it is necessary to ensure the City Schools of Decatur, grading is in compliance according to standards across our other peer school systems and also in accordance with the required state standards. We're also committed to ensuring a consistent and easily understandable grading system and platform across all grades. Finally, my last bit. Our schools will be closed Monday, September eighteenth through February the again, that would be a long fall break. I jumped us all the way to the next break. So from Monday, September the eighteenth through Friday, September the twenty-second, all C S D schools and district offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday. I want to wish all of our students and our staff and our families a fun fall break. And Chair Herndon, that completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Uh, the next item is the chair's report. On behalf of the board, I want to thank everyone for their continued engagement and support as we continue to work towards improving the outcomes for all of our students. There are so many great things happening in our schools, from STEMI Fridays to the robotics team's Lego Nights with elementary and middle schoolers. Our students are engaging in learning activities in fun ways. This week, schools are also celebrating the Arts and Education Week. I want to thank schools, especially the art teachers, for bringing arts to life for all of our students. Fave has a real-life superhero there, and we are so proud of our fifth grader by the name of Chandler, who recently acted quickly, administered the Heimlich maneuver on a choking classmate, and prevented a potentially life-threatening situation. Chandler was featured on the local news media, and we plan to honor him at next month's board meeting. Again, we are proud, as we talked about earlier, for designating DHS as a top high school. Congratulations to all the students who are recognized today for the awards for the Governor's Honors Program and the College Board. I also understand DHS will welcome twelve students from Denmark, September sixteenth to the twenty-eighth. They will develop and conduct lessons for DHS students focusing on language acquisition and cultural exchange. In March, eighteen DHS students will travel to Denmark to do the same. While we have much to celebrate in C S D, we fully recognize the board that there are still many areas for growth. We will work to ensure the alignment of district resources and operational efficiency, and we understand the importance of continuing to work on communicating those results to the community. As such, immediately following today's board meeting, the board will launch the first in a series of community meetings scheduled this year to promote transparency, two-way communication between the board and the community. We will hold them annually in the fall, winter, and spring. They will feature topics of interest, district updates, training on the use of goals and guardrails to govern. After presentations, community members will have an opportunity to ask questions and just provide feedback. The meeting tonight, immediately following the board, is at seven o'clock in the theater, the P A C, at Decatur High School. The winter meeting is scheduled for January twenty-third and April thirtieth in the spring. The topic for tonight's meeting is grading. The board heard a presentation this evening on the district's grading and assessment system. I want to restate for this distinct meeting that each board member has received feedback about concerns around the current grading system, particularly at the high school level, and the implementation of some of the recommendations presented by the previous grading task force. The board strongly supports and is committed to ensuring that C S D has a consistent grading system that is transparent, easy for students and parents to access and understand. Over the next few months, the board is focused on creating that grading policy. The process includes opportunities for feedback from students, staff, and families. Tonight's meeting is not the announcement of a grading policy. It's the beginning of that process, and we look forward to the attendance and participation at tonight's inaugural Board Community Meeting at the theater. In closing, I just want to remind the public and community that in August, the board announced the decision to hold these earlier meeting times. So for example, today, executive session was at three, pre-work was at four, work session at five. Board meeting began at six, and we will get to public comment shortly. Except for the executive session, all meetings will be live streamed. They're open to public. The times will vary each month as we plan our agenda, but I want to continue to emphasize that change takes time, and I'm asking for the community to support and grace as we move to make C S D greater. I hope everyone enjoys that fall break, has fun, and safe. Fellow board members, any thoughts or comments that you all would like to share at this time?
Just want to reiterate that when we say Q and A, unlike public comment, we do actually mean that we are going to answer your questions when you're asking us in the public meeting. So if you do have comments about grading that you want to share, please do come to that meeting. We want to hear them, and we want to be able to have a conversation about it.
Anyone else? Thank you all. We'll now move to the action items portion of tonight's agenda. We do not have any action on executive session items. Board will move to the consent agenda items. That includes the personnel report, school nutrition, monthly finances, and the Perkins Grant. Dr. Whitaker, I see the financial report has a presentation?
Yes, Chair Herndon, I would like to call Ms. Lumina Broom, Chief Financial Officer, to present the monthly financial report.
Good evening, Board Chair Herndon, Madam Vice Chair Fulton, esteemed members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Whitaker, and community. The July twenty-two-three financial reports that are located in the Assembly Agenda are in a new format by function. A marked analysis of the format of school district monthly financial reports in the Atlanta metropolitan area shows that the majority of school districts are submitting the report to their Board of Education by function category. The monthly financial reports for the City Schools of Decatur have traditionally been submitted by function and object code. The function category identifies the category of the purchase. Examples of function categories are instruction, maintenance, and hub service. Located in the board meeting agenda, you will find an appendix with a description of each function code. The Board of Education approved the annual budget at the function level, and to enhance the board's monitoring of the budget, the new format of the monthly financial report will be by function effective with today's financial report. The new financial report format lists the budget, the revenue and expenditures for the month, the year-to-date revenues and expenditures, the remaining balance for each function, and the percentage of the budget that has been used. The report will continue to show total expenditures and revenues for the month and year in the S F R efficiency of revenue. The format of the monthly balance sheet will remain the same. As we built the fiscal year twenty-four budget, one of the major fiscal impacts was the state's half-premium annual cost increase from eleven thousand three hundred and forty to eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty per employee, an annual increase of seven thousand six hundred and twenty per participating employee. State half-premium increases for certified employees went into effect on January first, twenty-twenty-three. The state will fully fund the estimated three-point-seven million for the increases in state half-premium for certified employees. The district will be responsible for using local funds to fund the premium increase for non-certified employees. The rate increase for non-certified employees will be effective on January first, twenty-twenty-four, and will be phased in over a three-year period. The first increase will be fifteen hundred per participating member for six months. Three hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred was included in the current, or is included in the current fiscal year twenty-four budget to cover the increase in premiums for non-certified employees. The three hundred and fifty-two five hundred for six-months increase will carry over into fiscal year twenty-five budget with an additional increase of three fifty-two five hundred for the remaining six months. And the phase-two increase, which will be effective on January first, twenty-twenty-five, will also increase the fiscal year twenty-five budget by three fifty-two five hundred. The total fiscal year twenty-five increase will be approximately seven hundred and five thousand. In May of twenty-twenty-three, the board approved a fiscal year twenty-four general fund budget of ninety-seven million eight hundred twenty-four thousand and six hundred and five. This budget has increased by four ninety-seven, seven fifty-three to the state-awarded grant. State grants are funds allocated from the state for specific purposes. The funds are listed in thirty-eight hundred of the Grants, Georgia, D O E, on your financial report. Included in the increase is ten thousand and seven for the dyslexia grant for the new fiscal year twenty-four requirement to screen all students in kindergarten and in grades one through three, the characteristics of dyslexia and other disorders. The Georgia General Assembly will assist with the cost of screening requirements. Grant funds were allocated based on the number of students in kindergarten and grades one through three. Five thousand one hundred and twenty-five has been awarded for the venom hygiene grant, thirty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-five science supplement, supplemental grant given to eligible math and science teachers, and four hundred and fifty thousand for the school safety grant that was discussed with the board in August. The district has collected twenty-four percent or approximately twenty-three point eight million of the budgeted revenue for the month of July, which is one percent lower than what was collected this time last year. The majority of July revenue collections were from property taxes. Approximately twenty-two point eight million came from property taxes. Property tax revenues are collected in April and December. The April collections were recognized as current fiscal year revenue in account of the district receiving such a large percentage of budgeted revenue within the first month of this week. The percentage of tax revenue collected for July twenty-twenty-three is eight percent more than that which was collected this time last year. Earnings on investment trend is higher than anticipated. The amount received this month is approximately thirty-nine thousand or two hundred and twenty-six percent higher than the amount received in July twenty-twenty-two. We will most likely need a budget limit to increase the anticipated revenue. Our other revenues trend as anticipated. Expenditures are normal for this time of the year. The district has expended two percent of the overall budget or approximately one point nine million for the month of July. It is one percent lower than what was spent in July twenty-twenty-two. The majority of these expenses are the salaries and benefits of twelve-month employees along with purchases associated with the start of the new school. Overall year-to-date, there's a surplus of approximately twenty-one point nine million due primarily to the large stream of property tax collection posted in July. Last year, at this time, there was a surplus of nineteen point five. The surplus of revenue is normal at this time of the year in account for the healthy fund balance of thirty-seven point four million. However, please note that the fund balance will decrease as expenditures fly revenue for capital funds consists of approximately consists of approximately twenty-two thousand from earnings on investment. Receipts of capital proceeds will begin in August. Expenditures are normal for this time of the year, and the one forty-eight, three thirty deficit will be covered by the fund balance, which is currently seven point two million. Just the year twenty-four anticipated expenditures for capital is approximately seven point two. School nutrition revenues and expenditures are trending within the same range as previous years. During the summer months, when schools are out, school nutrition traditionally operates at a deficit. School nutrition revenue from sales in the federal government traditionally comes in during the months of harvest. The seventy-three, nine, six, seven deficit will be covered by the fund balance, which is currently one point four. Central revenue funds are all other funds, including federal and state grants, not budgeted in general funds. We're currently closing out the fiscal year twenty-three grants and receiving reimbursement and preparing for the fiscal year twenty-four grants. I will be happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification if needed.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions about any of those numbers?
No, but can I say hallelujah about the budget report? I mean, this function code thing is fantastic. Thank you so much, Ms. Broom. I think it's extremely helpful to look at it.
You have made this year.
You just made the
You may have made my next sentence.
The attachment about function codes that categorize the thing, that's what you're excited about. That's an actual question.
Why don't you tell my wife about it?
No. Fair enough. Excellent.
We've been here a while.
All right, give a thank you, Ms. Broom. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items now, one through four?
Motion to approve consent items, one through four.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, unanimously. Next, we'll review our discussion item. We have one item this afternoon, evening. Dr. Whitaker, will you please introduce that item?
Yes, Board Chair Herndon, I call on Ms. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff, to share an item about the 2023-24 School Board Calendar.
Good evening, again. Um, Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Fulton, esteemed members of the Board, and the parents and grandparents of the children. Um, making the recommendation this evening for approval of the Board of Education meeting schedule and calendar that includes everything that we have talked about as far as the board meetings, um, the change to the enrollment dates that were discussed previously, as well as the fourth retreat dates that are occurring quarterly, that allow us to take a deep dive into data, discussion, and information. Um, those, of course, are also open to the public, as well as now those community meetings, which are an opportunity to foster two-way communication with the community about vision, values, and results. Community meetings demonstrate transparency and board community observations of school system's operation. Those take place in the fall, winter, and spring, with the first, um, taking place very shortly over in Decatur High School. The recommendation is to approve the Board of Education meeting schedule.
Can I read the motion statement?
Please.
I move that the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendation of revised 2023-2024 School Board Calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Do I have a motion to accept the 2023-2024 School Board Calendar?
Move to accept the 2023-2024, um, School Board Calendar.
Excellent, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Lynch, for the presentation. Now move to public comment. Do we have people signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do.
Excellent. Uh, I'm hip to read this. "The following information is included in the Board Policy Manual. Members of the public are acknowledged this information when they sign up to speak. This serves as a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience. The opportunity to address the Board during public comment is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. Persons wishing to address the Board during public comment must sign in, uh, before public comment period begins, and in doing so, we ask to state their connection. So allow time for the Board's other business. Our first community meeting, uh, the Decatur High School, public commented will be limited. At the Board's discretion, uh, the public comment period may be reduced. The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor, transfer unused time. Comments during public comment should be addressed to the Board as a body, not to individual Board members. At the Chair's discretion, persons violating that policy may be asked to step down. Speakers should be courteous and professional. They are not to list complaints about a specific personnel or individual connected with the district in a public session. The Board strictly prohibits abusive language, threats, comments, jeers, applause, or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The Chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defaminatory, or disruptive. If any speaker's comments begin to verge into the areas of defamation or hate speech, I will have to ask the speaker to end their comments. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel-related matters, but should submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the Board will not address the person presenting or speak to the substance of any comment made. Instead, a member of the admin team will follow up with person speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Whitaker, will you please call our first speaker?
Yes, our first speaker is David Messer. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Our first speaker for today, which is September the 12th, is Krista Soban.
My name is Krista Soban, I have a parent of a ninth grader and 10th grader at the high school. I simply here, um, I guess, for two quick things. One is, I do appreciate the intent of the community meeting. I would just so ask that in the future, if working parents could be given more than three business days notice. I, as a parent, got the email Friday morning at 9:08 a.m. It is difficult to arrange your life if you could be here three days later. Um, additionally, with all due respect, except at Decatur High School, I know Decatur High School. I'm sure it was implied that it was in the Performing Arts Center, but it wasn't explicitly stated. And so if we were to create a more inclusive and welcoming community, which I do believe is the intent of these community meetings, I would just encourage us to be really thoughtful and deliberate about both the notice that we're giving parents and also the details. A lot of my Beacon Hill friends don't even know where the Performing Arts Center is at the high school. So again, I appreciate the intent was great. Um, I would just ask if we could just get a little more current on some of those specifics, that would be really lovely, um, on behalf of my parents' friends. Finally, the last time I saw Ben address this board, I don't believe any of you are on it, but, um, my then, my now 10th grader, then 2nd grader, was talking about the experience we had of being a host family. Many moons ago, VES and CSD coordinated, we hosted during their student teaching. Um, this Friday, my family and I were flying to Madrid to attend the wedding of the students that we hosted. I think Toledo thing. I'm hoping this is cool, excuse me, but we'll see. Um, because the wedding is Friday night, but anyway, I thought that would be a fun closing of show. I'm sorry, I'm not going on the board, but it was, um, it's a neat spectacle moment. So thank you for your time, and also, and I'd like to open with, thank you for all you do. I do appreciate it. Having never served in a Board of Education, but on other boards, I recognize all the things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Ms. Hannah Rogers. Hannah here? She signed up previously. All right, our next speaker is Sabrina Shields.
So, my name is Sabrina Shields, and I'm the President of the Decatur City Association of Educators, which stands for D-C-A-E. You know, we have a lot of acronyms around here. Um, which is the local chapter of Georgia Association of Educators, which is G-A-E. Here with me are some of the executive members of D-C-A-E. We all have one orange. Um, the members of D-C-A-E would like to formally welcome you, Doctor Whitaker, to the City Schools of Decatur, and thanks to the Board for letting us have the moment to speak. So the member, the mission, I'm sorry, of G-A-E and D-C-A-E is to support, protect, and strengthen those who nurture Georgia's children. The Georgia Association of Educators is the most experienced and effective professional organization for teachers, administrators, and educational support professionals within Georgia's public schools. We look forward to working with you and the administration to address issues and concerns of employees. Thank you so much for your time, and you all have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to call on our final constituent, Lena Kottler.
All right, well, I've written something, but I'm going to talk a little faster than that. I think a lot of you know my name already. Several of us have had children in the same classes. Um, my name is Lena Kottler. I have three children in City Schools of Decatur. We've been in the system for 12 years now, so just a high schooler, and started at college high, she's currently in his sophomore year. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about my middle child. My eight-year-old Alex is trans. She came out to her family when she was six years old, and as a parent, there are not a lot of moments in life when you just know you've got to get this right or you're about to really screw your kid up. So touching her in the bed that night, um, when she said, Mom, I'd like to start wearing dresses, was one of those moments. To the credit of many of the people who have been in City Schools of Decatur with her for the last two years, when an apartment breaks her, when she changed her pronouns and her names, and she started dressing like a goth teenager from the 90s, they embraced it. At the time, we were told the only way to change her name in the system was to list her, her new name as a nickname in their campus. But that, if we did that, no other teacher would deadname her. I'm here tonight because on August 9th, I picked my child up from school, and in the car, she said to me, do you want to hear about the worst part of my day? And that is when my eight-year-old told me about the teacher who had deadnamed her in class. When I contacted the school to tell them about the incident, to make sure everyone had the right information, but also to tell them about how the teacher stood by while her peers, my eight-year-old peers, teased her because they thought out in the room, left her to fend for herself and asked her peers to please stop harming her. For people in the room who are not familiar, deadnaming in the form of verbal violence when someone chooses to use the name given at birth. And in honor of what this month is, people who are deadnamed, trans people who are deadnamed, particularly when they are deadnamed by the story figure of the child, have higher risk for bullying, depression, mental health issues, and suicidal ideation. In the last six weeks, I have exhausted every single avenue that I can take. I'm going to talk really, really fast, but this is important. CSD's response thus far from school level to the district level has been put her back in class and let us know if it happens again. In my time, you all need to understand that in speaking to families, this is not the first time this teacher has done this. The school is aware of the history of her doing this, and no action has been taken. I guarantee you that, that other than the two other children I know who have been brave enough to come forward, there's an exponentially larger number of children that are actively being harmed at Tally Street, Upper Elementary. And CSD seems to be more concerned about me speaking out about this publicly on social media, and they are about actual harm being done to actual students. Thank you.
Well.
That is all.
All right, we would like to thank all of the speakers for taking time of your day to be here tonight. As board members, it is incredibly important for us to hear the concerns from our community. Uh, additionally, this Board has launched community meetings. They're an opportunity for the Board to foster two-way communication about vision, values, and results. Uh, the meetings demonstrate our attempt at transparency, afford observations of school system operations. These annual meetings will take place three times a year. Um, last item is future dates. Uh, the Fall Community Meeting is scheduled for tonight. The October Board Meeting is scheduled for the 10th at the Wilson Center, and we will continue to follow the new board cadence. There are no further business. This meeting is adjourned at 7:00.